Welcome to the Town of Long Beach Town Council meeting, the last one of the year. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution, and to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the November 11th meeting?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opening remarks. This is the last Town Council meeting of the year. This will be the last Town Council meeting for three of our board members. I'd like to thank Jane Nylov for her eight years of service. Jane has been the conscience of the Town Council for eight years. I'd like to thank Joy Schmidt for her excellent work on the Town Council. She's just done a wonderful job with the Community Center, with the Park Board. Also, her work on the sewer plants has been outstanding. I count her as a friend and am very happy that she's been willing to serve with me. Finally, I'd like to thank Pete Byvotes for his eight years of service on the Town Council. I think Pete's been one of the hardest-working members of the Town Council. I think this town owes a lot to Pete. I think he's probably been the best Town Councilman I've seen in the time that I've been following the Town Council. I'd like to thank him for being my colleague, maybe more importantly, for being my friend. So, thanks, Pete. Okay, Police Department report.
In the month of November, the 216 dispatch calls, 41 logins, 2,000 miles. Power report was 782, overtime was 29 hours, 18 hours out of training, $15 in case investigation, reserve office for 9 hours. There was 26 traffic stops, 16 citations, six trip warnings, six verbal warnings, one park citation, two vehicle encounters, seven suspicious subjects were checked, seven vehicles, three courtesy services, four ordinance violations were checked, one ordinance citation, 18 alarms for the month. On the report side, there was one burglary report, there was one theft of a unlocked vehicle, and several of them, and only one reported anything. One supplement report assisted Indiana State Police, one arrest of an O.G., two arrests of possession of an interest.
Thank you. Police Commission report, Pete?
We met on December 4th. Chief, myself, Barbara Morgan in attendance. We talked about 30-day rental violations and the other 100-plus citations that have been issued that are older than three months. They will all be in process by year-end. By "in process," I mean they will be in the hands of the court. The new police bulletproof vests have been received, but we're waiting for the storage or the carrier before they can be utilized by the police. Still waiting for the replacement of the 2006 Ford Expedition. I think you indicated it won't be, you don't think it's going to be around until March.
January or February.
Oh, now January? Okay, I got that wrong. The Police Department will continue to follow up on rental violations. Renee is doing that on a weekly basis, and we'll continue to pursue those violators. We have a presentation by the chief of a body worn, body cameras, which are certainly more sophisticated than the ones we had originally talked about, with a, I guess, actually a less, a smaller price tag than we were originally talking about for a five-year period. It'll be something that the Budget Finance Committee will go over and make a recommendation to the town. Personally, I think it's a good idea. It's a safety issue that also provides many alerts, not just for the town and the individuals, but for the police officer in certain cases of when he's in distress, automatic things will happen, will notify the 911 center, notify other officials, and can be aided. So it looks like a good safety item. We're going to also be looking at cameras coming into the town, but in other words, identifying vehicles that come into the town from the four locations, but that's a lower priority at this point. And we talked about two squad cars being necessary somewhere in 2020, as they reach their useful life. I think the chief's done a good job. We've had some good input from the various officers, and I know personally I've experienced some good conduct and good performance on the basis of officers performing stops and that sort of thing. And the chief, as I had mentioned sometime in the past, is now a member of the Indiana Association of Chiefs Police.
Executive Board.
Mm-hmm?
Executive Board.
Executive Board, yeah, okay. And that really was important in being able to acquire this new quote for the body cameras as I talked about. Thanks, Bob. That's it?
Volunteer Fire Department, do we have anybody here from the Fire Department? He'll have to wait until next month. Same thing with the Fire Commission. Street Department, Tom?
For the past month, we've worked on clearing the town parks of leaves. We've done that numerous times. We're keeping the leaf pickers going. Had a couple of machine problems, but nothing that altered the progress except for weather. We helped the water department guys with a couple of water services. Finished our lighting repairs of our lights, and the Street Department garage started working on the Police Department garage, we'll probably come say that after the leaf pickup finished. And we're working on our street paving plan for spring and summer. And now we had a couple of trees fall on a couple of our recent days, and we'll clear those out of the street.
Street Commission, Jane?
Yes, our last meeting was canceled, but we've been, you know, we had to extend a week for the leaf pickup because of the snow we had in the past, so that's going to be done until Friday, right, Tom?
Yes.
Yes. And so everybody get your leaves out as soon as you can. And that's really the end of my report. Tom, I just want to know, who was the ones that lifted up the stairs at 23 so that could be saved, that segment of stairs?
Who would have done that?
Thank you.
Okay, Park Board, Joy?
The Park Board met, excuse me, 11/26/19. They are in the process of completing Stop 14. I believe Stop 18 is complete. Discussions have started on Stop 28, which will begin in the spring. The Park Board also submitted a lengthy letter to the Town Council members, which I've given to each one, but I'm just going to summarize it. It's a testimony to how awesome Tom and the Street Department are, and that the Park Board really, it's been a joint effort between the streets and the parks to get the stops done. And so a huge thank you to the Street Department, and they all thank you all for the work. Next meeting, 1/28/20. There'll be no December meeting because it fell on Christmas Eve.
Okay, Community Center, Joy?
Community Center met 12/219. The committee reviewed all the leases, and they recommend no increase in rent for the tenants for this year, although we did create a new Exhibit B for the Y, which is a little more specific. The Y gets a $300 a month deduction in their rent because they do a lot of duties for the committee, so we just sort of put all that in writing, so it can be prepared. And their next meeting will be 1/6/2020.
Great. Do we have anybody from the Water Board?
I have.
Oh, good, go for it. You got a report?
Oh, I thought we didn't.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Usually Nick does, but he's not here.
Well, they finished the, they finished the line out in the, and all of that, it's fine. I'm trying to think if it's a new thing to prepare, but there was a new thing exceptional, and we will meet Wednesday, Monday, the 16th, from our meeting before Monday. I'm not sure why, but I think that works with everybody's schedule.
Okay.
If I think something, you'll let me know.
Yep. Budget Finance, Pete?
Well, we don't meet until Wednesday, but the topic will certainly be identifying the capital expenses that we have. The capital expenses that we've identified having to do with Stop 24. We now have an idea, I think better, of the ADA process, Stop 15. The individual issue with the Budget Finance Committee is we have a lot of capital improvements that are going to take place this year. We had a cash flow analysis prepared by Sender and Company. Once we are able to identify the major expenditures and pin them down, we'll be meeting as a group with the council to identify perhaps some cutbacks that will be necessary in our budget. But we'll be meeting Wednesday here at 8:30. It's a good place to come.
One additional piece that I didn't get to tell you. We heard, we've been very happy with Michigan Insurance and Bliss McKnight as our property casualty insurer, and we just got the renewal, and I was pleased that it was only 1.7% increase from 2019 to 2020, so that beats most of us surrounding communities.
Bliss McKnight has been very good for us in many ways.
Human Resources, Bill?
No, no.
Building Commission, Pete?
I'm just going to talk about the new business items, what we focused on over the last couple meetings with the Building Commission, and we're going to be meeting this Friday at 1 o'clock again to identify and carry forward some of these ideas, but particularly we have been addressing the issues that have to do with Lake Shore and the failing seawalls. We've identified that at this point in time, seawalls have been failing or are in jeopardy at 2234 Lake Shore Drive, 2120, 2116, 2214, 2110, and 2060, as well as Stop 23. Stop 23 has had, which is located, as you can imagine, between two homes, one of which the seawall is failing. The last storm that came in took a substantial amount of sand away and bluff away, such that the steps were in jeopardy of coming in, and certainly after everybody evaluated it, Lake Shore Drive itself was in jeopardy. So we've taken immediate action to shore up the bluff at Stop 23, and we believe that it is protected now, but the storm basically came, took away at least 30 feet of sand and bluff, and went to Lake Shore Drive. One more storm like that could have jeopardized Lake Shore Drive. So we've put some emergency sandbags in to protect it, and that's all I can say at this point in time. It remains to be seen where we go with this. I want to commend Larry Wall, who has been down at the Lake Shore supervising, or I should say consulting on an unpaid basis with various homeowners down there. One of the seawalls, if you haven't had a chance to go down there, I don't recommend it, but if you do go down there, you will notice that one of the seawalls between 21 and 22 has bowed out at least five feet, so that the water splashed up over it, got behind the seawall, and had nowhere to go, so it bowed out the seawall, and we had no choice but to allow the individuals to take emergency repair methods to save their homes. Had that wall, which was very close to failing, in other words, falling out towards the lake, had it gone, it certainly would have taken two or three good portions of homes that were right there at the lake. So I don't recommend going down there, but if you do, you'll see the damage that's been done. And this has to do with improperly installed seawalls in dangerous locations. That's all I have to say. But we'll be meeting Friday, and we'll have a better idea of where we need to go and how we need to get there at that point in time.
BZA report, BZA did not meet last month. They will be meeting tomorrow. Actually, tomorrow they're going to be considering four different properties, four variances, so you might want to come to that meeting. Advisory Plan Commission, Nick's not here. That was canceled. That meeting will be taking place next Monday. Building Permit Revenue Report?
The Building Permit Revenue Report for November 2019, four permits approved with fees of $2,000 collected on project cost of $199,990. Three electrical permits in November with revenue of $52.60 on fees of $526. Legal expenses in November, $5,106.75, $442.25 to Bradish, Nelson, and James, $532.50 to Austin, Piper, Gisitis, and $153 to Night Hoppy, Kurnick, and Knight.
We need to approve that?
Motion to approve the reports?
I hear a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Okay. Unfinished business, sewer update, Joy?
Not much to update. We're still waiting for financial analysis from Carl Sender and the okay that Michigan City Sanitary District has accepted the preliminary engineering report. However, Jim Moller from HAZ did ask for a letter from La Porte County Health Department, which I gave everyone a copy, and there's a lot of information out there where people said that this Town Council went to the county and were responsible for the moratorium. It's just not true. I'd just like to read you this letter. This letter is a response to your inquiry of septic system moratorium on Lake Shore Drive that was instituted on October 24th, 2017. As you know, the La Porte County Health Board issued a moratorium for the construction of any septic system for the lakeside of Lake Shore Drive from Long Beach to the state line. With the ever-changing water heights, the pattern of septic system failures, and the septic system actually being washed away along Lake Shore Drive, the Health Board determined that the most prudent means of protecting public health and the environment was in a cross-board ban on issuance of new permits. At the time of the issuance of the moratorium, the Health Board informed the Town of Long Beach that the only solution is a sanitary sewer. Since the issuance of the moratorium, there have been multiple homes on both sides of Lake Shore Drive that have been placed on Pump and Hall. The south side or hillside has a unique topography which makes it nearly impossible to get equipment or even materials on-site to install or replace a septic system. The lakeside has seen lake levels rise to the point that seawalls are being breached and compromising septic systems. Even without the moratorium in place, proper separation distance of septic systems from Lake Michigan in the interest of public health cannot be met. The La Porte County Health Department 100% supports the installation of sewers along Lake Shore Drive in the Town of Long Beach. It is of utmost importance with the current situation that this occurs to protect both public health and the groundly surface waters of the state of Indiana. Respectfully... So I just wanted to read that in, and as soon as Michigan City Sanitary District accepts the preliminary engineering report and we get the financial analysis from Carl Sender, they'll be sending up, setting up a public hearing that will be convenient for everybody to attend. That's it for sewers.
Okay.
Questions?
With the Water Department?
Yeah.
One of the subjects is the sewers because it would be a good time to, some of the original piping on Lake Shore Drive for the homeowners, because they're original from the town, and so when they're going to tear up the road with sewers, that's one of the things we talked about, about putting in better pipes, because why tear up the road twice? So that was one of our things, but we're waiting to see what happens, and I know that Greg is working with the const.
Yes.
Have that looked at.
Yeah.
It just kind of piggybacks on it, but it's not, it's not in any worse, we're just thinking about it.
Good, okay. Any other questions? All right, Save the Dunes Partnership, we've been investigating the possibility of the town deeding property in Stockwell Woods to Save the Dunes. We have Melly Hoppy here from Save the Dunes. Melly, why don't you fill us in on where Save the Dunes is located?
Hi, I'm Melly Hoppy. I'm president of the board of Save the Dunes. I live in Long Beach at Stop 16, 1604 Holmes Court, and the board of Save the Dunes voted unanimously to accept the land that is donated to Save the Dunes from the Town of Long Beach. We would love to extend the property in Stockwell Woods, which we acquired from the Nature Conservancy in 2005, so we've been managing the land since then. We have a group of volunteers and land management experts who've been working on the land management in Stockwell Woods, and we would like the community to be involved if we extend the property, if you're actually to be able to expand the property. We would love the community of Long Beach to be as involved in the land management of that property as well. We invited Liam McConroy here to talk. He's been helping us with the stewardship of Stockwell, and so we invited him here to talk a little bit about the management that we've been doing so far at Stockwell, because I think there's been some confusion about what's happened back there in Stockwell, and so he can address some of those issues.
Great. Neil, the floor is yours.
My name is Neil McConroy. Excuse me. I'm a member of Save the Dunes also, but a little background on myself is I worked for the national park, the Indiana Dunes National Park, for 20 years. I was in resource management and part of the fire group there. I think what, I wasn't here when Save the Dunes originally did that thinning treatment of cutting down trees in Stockwell Woods, but I think what they're, what they wanted to do was just to clear some of the undergrowth from underneath and clear some of the trees, smaller trees there. And what I believe they were doing is kind of duplicating some processes that fire might have done originally. It doesn't take the place of fire, but fires normally keep the unbrushed low or much lower, and it kills the smaller trees, allowing light to come in. Also, you know, now there's not as many leaves and things like that, so it helps for the diversity of the plants under there. So I think that was their intent, and from what I could tell, it looked pretty successful to me. They did not clean up the wood that was cut down, I think that's what we're in the process of doing now, is stacking it and hoping to burn it in piles. But as far as what I could tell is it was pretty successful. It was, it seems pretty open. As I walk into Stockwell Woods, I see a lot more invasive species on either side of the trail than walking in. Until you get to that area, that's pretty clear of invasives, and open, so those are my observations. I seem to have done my job.
Great. Chris, your assessment of the deal with Stockwell and Save the Dunes?
Based on research, and I think some of us backed up to the same answers, there's some copyouts that I think the town needs to be careful on in any language going forward, and there needs to be written up, but I think you have the authority to do what Joy has been working on sometime in terms of transferring the property, and I think there's a process involved in it. Again, the short answer is that you do have the authority to make the transfer. I would suggest that whatever action you take a vote, that you make sure the subject is having a writing, and there's certain provisions in there that, you know, the charge or the purpose of Save the Dunes, knowing if it ceases to exist or doesn't continue down that path, for lack of a better description, that property is reverted to the town. But those are all things to discuss in the future. My charge from last meeting to this was to find out, or to give you my opinion on whether you have the authority and the answers, yes.
Do you, is there any way to stipulate in the giving that if, even if, like, Save the Dunes was still in, was still functional, but then they wanted to sell it for, you know, some reason, that that would not be permitted?
I think this guy's limited in terms of the provisions that you put in there and the conditions upon which it would revert back, so I think that, if my recollection is correct, last time they, Save the Dunes ultimately, in addition to having their board having to take a vote to accept this, we reminded them before it was two, was then knowing that the town is in, so that before they expend the money to have their environmental study down. So, but I think that the actual transfer is sometime off, it's not tonight, because you need to have a writing in place. But I do think that those provisions and, you know, coverage as well, to make sure that the town, what your vision of that partnership is going to be, and ultimately that transfer is met, will be part of that writing and ultimately recorded as part of the transfer document or the deed, so that's probably good.
So it sounds like if the town was planning on proceeding, the next step would be to authorize you to work on the paperwork to get that done?
Sure, and maybe, I don't know, if I can't speak for Save the Dunes, what they might need in terms of doing things for us from the Town Council, simple and forth, if there are environmental...
Yeah, I think that's our next step, is to do the environmental.
Yeah.
So we must do it.
I would make a motion that this council is ready to move forward with the transfer and allow them, you know, providing we have a document in place that covers everything we've talked about, a vote of competence to let Save the Dunes move forward with the environmental study.
And do you want to authorize, Chris, to work on that document?
Sure.
Okay. So that's the motion to...
That's the motion.
I hear a second.
I'll second, but I have a question for the Save the Dunes. Do you guys have a document, sample document, or some such?
My understanding is that our document would have to near the town's...
Yeah.
It would have to be the same location.
Right. I think ultimately what we need to agree on about the show, most of it is what the restrictions are going to be, right, the conditions upon which I have to, so those might, in my mind, be pretty standard, so as long as I have your authorization, I can reach out to you, or so that we're not reuniting.
But have you guys, has the Save the Dunes gone through this process before and has an agreement with some other entity that we could...
Um, I'm sure, yeah, because we've acquired land before, so...
I think that'd be a good starting point for us.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you guys could get that to Chris, and then you could work off of that, maybe?
Sure.
Would you take the question?
Go ahead.
Mike Norman, 2313, Lake Shore Drive. What is the amount of acres that's being employed, and is that the worth of located?
A total acre... It basically, Stockwell Woods is here, behind Stop 16 to 15, I think, or 14. And then there are three lots behind Stop 14, going down to Stop 13.
So those lots behind 14?
That's close from behind Stop 16.
What's being donated, is it, what's being donated, what?
Oh, can I give you this map, lots one, two, three?
I'm curious, that's all, I don't have any problem.
It's immediately behind what used to be American Sanibel, is it still American Sanibel? That, that land in there?
SciTech.
SciTech, no. And so it's that land between SciTech and, and Long Beach. So two, two of these lots are in Michigan City and one is in Long Beach.
It is contiguous with, in the back of Stop 16?
Yes.
To, I think, the line of Long Beach.
Yeah, even beyond the line, that number three is really lies in Michigan City.
So it's all back there and it's all wild and, and beautiful, and we're trying to make sure it stays that way.
Yeah, this area here has never even been sand lined, it's really pristine.
Can the property that, I guess was owned by Michigan City that had previously been on there to Save the Dunes?
It was originally. No, it was Stockwell Woods, who went from Mrs. Stockwell to the Nature Conservancy, then I think to Shirley Hines, and I think from Shirley Hines it went to Save the Dunes.
Yeah, all I know is the Nature Conservancy that got it in 87, and then Save the Dunes found it in 2000.
So this action here goes in the air, Chris?
It would triple the size of Stockwell, basically, in terms of acres, right?
Yeah, Stockwell right now is 13.26 acres, this would add an additional 24.61 acres.
Almost triple the size of Stockwell.
Thanks.
We did have a, a letter against this, and I don't know if the person is here, I don't know this person, if they would like to speak, unless they're here. I'll just read it to you, it just says, it was addressed to Chris, and then he forwarded to us, and he said, "Dear Chris, I heard that the Dunes Conservation Fund was at a recent LP meeting suggesting we give them Moon Valley land. Bad idea. I recall what they did after obtaining the Stockwell property south of Lake Shore Drive and extending south to the Woodruff property. Many of us had walked our dogs across the property," and I think just suppose, "across the property on an old east-west Moon Valley trail, which led to the lake that Beach Walk is now built on. Some of those Moon Valley trails reach back to the time when the Hacienda property was a horse stable, and there were riding trails all through Moon Valley and even extending Michigan City. Soon after the Dunes took over the property, they erected a steel four-foot fence surrounding the property with no gates and extending to the Woodruff fence. The purpose of the fence apparently was to stop anyone from using that old trail. Later, they cut many trees on the property, which I think you've explained, piled the wood to rot, and made a half-hearted effort to make a trail within the fence. Remnants of the old steel fence can still be seen. This is not the organization that we should have any land agreement with." There was some other things, but it's just kind of, the Moon Valley trails we have behind Stop 18 and 22 and extending to Chastleton Drive have been well-maintained by volunteers and the Boy Scouts for the 50-plus years that we have lived in Long Beach. They are there to be enjoyed by everyone and they cost the village very little. We should be extending our ownership of more Moon Valley land and not considering any gifting to any organization. Regards," and it was just Jerry, I'll just say. So that, you know.
I think that's probably why we wanted to have, invite Neil to come to speak to the canopy, which is standard practice.
Yes.
And then the fence, if you see that fence, that was way before 2000.
Oh, good, before you even.
Probably in this original Stockwell.
Yeah, I think it was part of Stockwell, and it was put there to keep people from riding their four-wheelers through there.
Yeah.
I see.
And in fact, Save the Dunes took the fence down. We, we took the fence that, the entryway to Stockwell, we actually took that fence down to make it more inviting for the public to come, walk through it.
And I would like to say the Moon Valley trails behind Stops 18 to 21 don't belong to Long Beach, that's private property, and so they're trespassing anyway if they're walking across there. And it's not maintained by Boy Scouts. Our, our little park that we have is maintained by the park board, and they have to pay somebody to go back there and cut down the trees and move them and.
But Joy, there is parts from 22 westward that do belong to the town, correct?
Just the three we're looking at.
Yeah.
Joy, the Boy Scouts, it was an Eagles project within the last couple of years that starts right across from Hacienda.
Right. I know, but then it goes to Stop 20, it goes from Stop 22 to 21 and ends.
But that's the town, right?
That is the town.
So the Boy Scouts didn't do that and played it up?
Right, but they're talking about walking to Lake Kai through there, that's all across private property.
Well, then we need to buy the current property.
We tried, and it was bought out and under us, and town was in on that deal.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ben's? Okay. Okay, new business, contract for the lobbyist. We have Chris Gibson here, he is our lobbyist. Chris, you want to just talk as to what has happened in terms of, what, what the town is getting from you?
Sure. So Chris Gibson, I'm the managing principal of the foreenter, which is a governmental fair determined in Indianapolis House, so I own a 3001 Lake Shore Drive, as of about a little over a year ago. And so the last session, we saw a bill, Senate Bill 581, which was filed by Senator Doria from Elkhart County, which essentially would have done two things. It would have tried to overturn the governor's decision by making something other than the natural, ordinary high watermark, the, you know, line of demarcation between public trust land and private, we own land, but also would have preempted any local ordinance by this body to regulate seawalls. And there were very, I won't go into the sausage making of last session, but there were several attempts and several iterations, but all essentially tried to strike at the heart of Gunderson, and strike at the heart of the local ordinance. This coming session, which will start on January 6th, we expect a similar effort. The Long Beach Lakeside Homeowners Group has registered, I just checked today, they have registered for the 2020 session, they've retained the same lobbying firm that they had last session. I've been told by at least one state rep that he intends to file a bill that would, in his words, make the distinction between public trust and private land, the wet sand line. Obviously, that would fly in the face of Gunderson. Also note that I just learned today that there was a federal lawsuit filed last Thursday at Porter County by some Porter County residents, also seeking to overturn Gunderson. It's a federal lawsuit, I've not read the complaint, I did forward it, an article about it to Chris, maybe an hour ago. You know, I, I don't know what grounds they're looking at, I mean, this is well said of law, Indiana's unanimous decision, as everybody in this room I'm sure knows, so, but there is litigation pending as of last Thursday. And so this session, our, our firm and I, just to tell you a little bit about the board and group, we have 13 professionals, nine of whom are registered lobbyists for the largest independent public affairs firm in Indianapolis, and our team will work hard to ensure that local control is retained on seawall issues, and also that, you know, there's not legislation that would look to overturn Gunderson.
Good deal. Thanks, Chris.
Will, will that pending legislation affect the legislators at all, if they try to?
Well, I mean, there's been a, you know, a defective source rule, especially in the Indiana Senate, that historically, and this will be my first one for this session, lobbying the Indiana General Assembly, I will say that in the past, there has been deference given to the courts in pending litigation. That doesn't always hold true, that's certainly not anywhere in, in, in the rules of the Senate or rules of the House, but there, there is, you know, there, that argument sometimes holds water, that if the courts are looking at an issue, but in this case, the courts have clearly looked at it, and the Indiana Supreme Court unanimously, you know, ruled a certain way on it, it just appears that, you know, they can't try to overturn it.
Thanks.
So Chris Littleby, you've looked at that contract? Everything is the same, I think, as last year?
Yes, it's, 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 both.
Do I hear, hear a motion to?
Make a motion, we've checked.
I second.
Second.
How much is the compensation?
I didn't forward the terms, I knew it at one time. For the year.
Four equal payments and 62.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 By the way, if everything needs signed, read a lot of this, I'm going to pass this down to the two next to the back pages, if you could sign Bob and pass it back to Mr. President, you know.
Okay. I'll take care of that now, because we have, yeah, we have a lot of signatures.
Yeah, it's, it's two counties.
On to Long Beach.
Yeah.
All right.
Chris Gibson wants to execute a counter before the meeting's over. I'll say this in post.
Sounds like the plan. Okay, next item in our new business, 2020 salary. So I guess we need to consider salaries for this coming year. Bill, you had a recommendation?
I recommended that we have a 3% increase across the board, since in lieu, in lieu of any formal procedures with, with employee reviews, that we just make a 3% across the board. I didn't produce anything, we can sign that at the next meeting, I can deal with, what do we have to do for this, for the salaries, but that would be my recommendation.
Well, I know that Social Security gave me a 1.6% cost of living increase, so if we're looking for cost of living until we can come up with a merit-based plan, 1.6 would be a cost of living increase.
Okay, well, you, to your.
And that's, that's from Social Security, so I guess that's probably true. I know also that our state legislature passed a statute this last session that said that elected officials' salaries can never be decreased, they can only be increased, so it sounds like Indiana's trying to emulate Illinois, creating a fiscal problem for the state. I guess I'm concerned about that, in that if, if we have an elected official and say his duties become less, we still have to pay that elected official the same. I don't understand why the state legislature would do that, but they did. So I guess, I, my feeling is, is I'm not sure this, this increase ought to necessarily go to elected officials until we figure out how we're going to deal with what the state legislature has gifted us with. That's, those are my thoughts. Rest of you?
I, I'm good with the 3%, and I really would like to see, I didn't even know they were, I was going to ask for elected officials to get a 3% raise, but I knew there was a legal stipulation of when that could be done. But in the past, I, maybe was not for that, but I think Bill deserves a raise, he, he works a lot, and so I have to say, my, my feeling is, I would like to see Bill be included in that raise of 3%.
But the law, I mean, you could even raise the, and this race is over here, repeat, that you could raise the council's salaries also, you just can't do it in the year in which, you can't do it, can't do it in 2020. You can only do it the year prior, so you can't do it during the year, whereas you can, you know, give a, give a raise to employees who are not elected during this 2020 year. We've done that in the past, and you just got caught. It's not, it's not.
In my opinion, I'd, I agree with Bob, that I don't think an elected official should get a 3% raise, I'm sorry, Bill, I know you work really hard. My issue is, if you're done after this term, then they might have very little experience, and they have to get the same salary that you, you're getting. That's my reasoning.
But what I, what my thought is as important as the rest of the people's thought, so what, what's your recommendation for the, for the employees?
I? I make a motion that be 1.9%, and that we then consider something that has not been done here ever, and that is a job description for every employee, a merit review process for every employee, and perhaps, even though we said, even though it could be 1.9%, the, there's nothing to say that it can't be raised anytime during the year. And I would also qualify that new hires, people hired within the last year, within the year, should not be eligible for an increase.
So that was three different parts, can you go over those again?
1.9, no increase for new hires, no increase for elected officials.
So when you say no increase?
And the fourth is a merit review process to be in place by July 31st.
And so when you say no increase for new hires?
Somebody hired within the last year, within, you know, the current fiscal year.
So you're saying somebody, so somebody hired this, during the 2019 fiscal year, isn't eligible for this increase?
Right.
Okay.
Could we put in, I just know the street department, they have had, had additional duties that they never had before since these grants that we've gotten, they require to have certification where they have to go to school for it, they have to be certified every year, and it, it's quite an increase of responsibility that they did not have before, and if we don't reward that, he's going to be stolen away from us. So I want to make sure he gets a 3% raise and his assistant.
I don't disagree with that, the problem is that, and I too would like to see certain people get it, but we have no process in place, and it's been brought to my attention that if we don't have a process in place, how can we justify one without doing something to the other, to another? So that's why I put in there the July 31st, where we have clear definition of authority and responsibility, therefore we can develop good, what would you call it, salary comparisons. We've attempted to have a salary study done, it's fallen on its face several times, and I agree that we should do something for some people.
And that we can do that, there's nothing stopping us from doing that, not one thing. So your, your, that, that criteria doesn't hold, so I want to plead with this board that we have to reward exceptional behavior and we have to reward. to reward exceptional behavior, and we have to reward, it would be fiscally stupid not to give the, because we have, his work has resulted in $700,000 for the town.
You're talking about the entire street department chain, or just?
Yes, both of them.
Wait a minute, both of?
Both of employees.
Okay. So there's three employees total in the street department?
No, two.
Two, Tom and?
Yeah.
Brent, okay, gotcha, okay. All right, well, we, so I guess, you know, this is multi-part, and I think, given the fact that it's multi-part, we need to probably vote each part separately. And, Chris, just want to ask you, issues involved with a municipality giving a raise to somebody based on not merit, just because they did a good job, is there any legal pitfalls that the town needs to consider?
If we're going to pass, next meeting, if those suggest it, make sure that we address the habit. You're right, but tonight, you were able to give a vote on raises of the direction you had, if you want to give certain, based on what you have in your policies, you're able to give the raises you desire.
Then let's vote each part at one at a time, and Pete, I heard you say 1.9% for all employees, and then we'll make that.
Not, but not elected officials.
Not elected officials, and also, let's do that separately. 1.9% for all employees, given that we may change that for the street department, we'll vote that also, okay? So right now, we're looking at 1.9% across the board. Do I hear a motion? I guess I.
Make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then, second motion would be not for elected officials, do I hear that motion?
I'll make that one.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Nay.
Okay, I'm going to go aye.
So we can do this all for the January meeting and put it all?
Right, we'll put it all together for that meeting and vote, but this is what we want to, we're voting on what we want to present at that January meeting. No increase for new hires, do I hear a motion?
Make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Nay.
Okay. And then, merit review was going to be completed by July of 2020?
July 31st, 2020.
Okay. And then implemented shortly thereafter, and then if that's implemented, somebody gets a merit increase, is that merit increase going to be retroactive, or how's that going to work?
We can decide that in July, you know, if you don't put back, we've done this before.
All right, so merit review by July 31st?
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then, street department, increase of 3%. Do I hear that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Before you vote, that's, we've already done 1.9.
Right, and that was contingent on, with the possible exception of the street department.
So it's not like 4.9, it's 3.
It's 3 total, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, 3 total, correct? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so Bill, you're going to bring that back?
I'll put it all.
To January meeting, and then we'll vote on it one last time as a group. Okay. Increase leaf assessment. Bill, I think there was an email from you, right?
The cost of, you know, we do have the needy population, everybody here except Eric, and not needy, but the rest of the, but we do have a lot of times where we're just picking up, you know, and we're scheduling extra weeks and everything else, and I just think, you know, we're falling behind the cost. There was some, there's always going to be rocks going into the equipment, everybody has to wear safety goggles and everything else, and just, I just see adding another dollar seven to the, to good leaf assessment. You know, there's so many pieces on the water bill now, there's three pieces to the water bill, and right now it's $24.99, we add it to $26.06, another dollar seven, and for those people who are in the choice area, it raises up to $29.3 to $10. So, you know, my recommendation is resolution that we have here before you to raise the leaf pickup rates by a dollar seven, and so we raise the water bill fee to $26.06 for those of us who are on public garbage pickup, and $10 for those people who are in the choice area.
So do we just make a motion to accept the resolution?
Well, somebody needs to make a, if you associate, if you want to make a resolution to accept this at all.
I make a motion that we accept the resolution?
I accept one.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Done.
Great. When you sign it, we're going to have to, or everything.
Okay. Next is a resolution about the disability access at Beach Stop 15. Basically, this is a resolution by the town to spend $100,000 so that we can get a $100,000 matching grant to put in the disability access at Stop 15. I'll read it. Whereas the town, whereas the Long Beach Town Council in Long Beach, Indiana, or Port County, Indiana, has identified the need for, and for the desirability of disability access to our Lake Michigan shoreline at Stop 15, whereas the town has incorporated feedback from its residents and public in the comprehensive plan, and this project is a direct outcome of the town's 2016 comprehensive plan, whereas the town has consulted with outside experts to assist in the development of the plan for this project, whereas the town has applied for a $100,000 matching grant to the Indiana Department of Natural Resources, Lake Michigan Coastal Program, being offered by the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Association. Be it resolved that the town of Long Beach has allocated the $100,000 matching funds for which it is responsible under the terms of the grant, within the town's budget under its Cumulative Capital Development Fund, and two, the town council agrees to turn over the long-term maintenance of the site following construction to the town's Parks and Recreation Department Board, who will manage the necessary maintenance required for this site. That's the resolution. Do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Basically, we need to do this so that they will consider our grant application. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Please give this to Bill. Bill, can you make sure this, pass it down to Bill if you could? Bill, can you make sure this gets signed by everybody after the meeting so that I can get it to the?
I'm sorry.
If you can make sure that that gets signed by all of us after the meeting, along with everything else we sign?
Okay.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I, I've got, okay.
It may be the same thing you already have, I'm not sure. Okay, and then, there's a letter also that we have to submit, and I will read that, and hopefully, everybody will be willing to sign it. Dear Indiana, Lake Michigan Coastal Advisory Board Grant Committee, Lake Michigan, the Indiana dunes and our shoreline are vital assets to this region and our state, with 45 miles of coast in Indiana, approximately 3.5 miles in Long Beach, the town understands its obligation to help maintain access to and enjoyment of this precious resource. The Long Beach Town Council, the Clerk Treasurer, and the Parks and Recreation are excited to submit a plan that will improve disability access to our shoreline at Stop 15. We plan to provide a clear public ADA access route to beachgoers from the parking, from parking of Lakeshore Drive to boardwalk access over the Ford Dune to the beach. We also plan to provide universal ADA signage informing the public as to the level of accessibility of the access route. We believe this grant application fits in well with your 2019 funding priorities. Today, the lakefront in Long Beach is enjoyed by many, but there are barriers that make it difficult for people confined to wheelchairs. This project will help remove that barrier, to help ensure the long-term success and enjoyment of the park, of the project. The town has identified the Long Beach Parks and Recreation Department and Park Board to manage and oversee the continued maintenance and future improvements to the site. The community is supportive of this project, as identified in our most recent comprehensive plan. We plan to keep the community informed on the progress of this project at our monthly Town Council and Advisory Plan Commission meetings, and are planning a ribbon-cutting ceremony on completion of the project. We plan also to install signage at various locations around the town, advertising its availability. Do I hear a motion to sign that? That was a yes?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Come on down.
Aye. Say aye.
Aye.
Pass that down to Bill, so that it gets signed by everybody also at the end of the meeting. Hazen Associates Agreement Renewal. So Hazen Associates is the town engineering firm, we have a new agreement with them. Surprise, surprise, they've increased their prices, not by a huge amount, $5 and $10 for various services. Everybody's had a chance to look at this. Do I hear a motion to accept it?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I think this one just gets signed by me.
This one?
This is a lot.
This just goes to Bob.
Proposed tree ordinance. Everybody has had a chance to see it, I don't know, has the tree ordinance been published on the website? I don't think it has.
I don't know.
I don't know, do we want to discuss it?
I think that would snap.
Put it on the website before we discuss it?
Yeah.
It probably makes sense, don't you think?
I think so.
All right, so what do you say, we table this till the next meeting, and meantime, get it posted?
Sounds good.
On the website? Hear a motion to table?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done.
Aye.
Okay, year-to-date meeting, or year-end meeting?
Just for some, you know, we have to sign some checks, and, you know, the date that the time that people could.
Pick a date? Brought my calendar.
You can get at least three council members.
Anybody want to?
Say it, please.
So it has to be close to the year end, so like?
Yeah, I mean.
How about like the 30th? Would that be good? That's big.
How about the 30th, is it, is a?
Monday.
Monday.
What's that, is that, is that, excuse me, oh no?
It's a Monday.
Monday, okay, Monday, the 30th.
Does that work?
Okay.
Monday, the 30th?
Seven?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, I'll put that in the paper.
Great. Public comments.
Could I read this one first?
Oh yeah, go ahead, yep.
I got a letter from Nicola Chalick of 1412 Lakeshore Drive, and she says, "I certainly understand the attention the board is giving to the water erosion issues and home destruction from Stop 21 to the end of Long Beach. The situation for those homeowners is awful. However, I would like to advise the board of the issues further west, stops 13 to 15 specifically. The beach area is filled with tree stumps, huge tree branches, a utility pole, and masses, or massive amounts, I think, of debris. This has resulted from the storms in October and November. It is impossible to clean the mess up without bulldozer or other pieces of equipment. Humans cannot physically move this debris. However, with the stop improvement program, our access to the beach for this equipment will be nonexistent. Stop 16 and 18 have been improved, work has started to stop 14, which leaves only Stop 15 available. I believe Stop 23 was planned to be, I think she meant Stop 24, to be an access stop, but it is underwater, as are other stops between 15 and 23. Please consider stopping all further improvements to stops until these water issues have been resolved. With so many of our beaches unstable currently, these beaches further west will be packed with people trying to find a usable beach. The beaches from 13 to 15 are not usable in their present condition. We need help from the city to clean up these areas of the beach from both now and in the spring. Please make sure that it will be possible to get equipment to the beach to clean it up and provide each enjoyment for all." Nicola Chalick, 1412 Lakeshore Drive. So, you know, I think as a river, the beach access will move south, or west, I guess, if the beaches, you know, don't come back. And I don't know what, you know, maybe that's just something that's a caution that we need to.
No, I have to go out with concern.
Yeah, you know, maybe that could be discussed, like, the building commission meets on Friday, maybe we can discuss that, I think that'd be the logical place.
Thank you.
Okay. Other public comments.
Mary, with regard to the salary increase, so the two people in the street department will get 3%, and then who are the other employees that only get 1.9%?
All the rest.
Who are all the rest? Indiana, who else?
1.9% for everybody but the street department, and not for the council or the clerk president.
Now, who's, other than Indiana, who is included in that 1.9%?
What's that?
Other than Indiana, who is included in that 1.9%?
That would be the two employees, well, there are three employees in the water department, but one's new, so he is precluded. Craig Parrish is the superintendent of the water department, Angela, Paul Mary is the water office manager, and we have a daytime dispatcher, and then we have a police chief and four officers.
So why, I'm just asking this, I'm thinking of discrimination, why do the water department get 3% and the other employees that have been here for years?
Street commission.
Street department.
You said water.
Sorry, street department get 3%, other employees who have been here for years get 1.9, and there's no performance appraisal. So what are we setting our cell phone for? Aren't they good employees too? And I, did anybody do a salary survey? And I know what Social Security gives, and that's usually not representative of what the area gives, that's because we're retired, but if you go to local industries, we can find out, and I'm sure.
Right, but that's cost of living, that was what we.
Well, that's the cost of living, but we're also probably increasing their cost of health insurance and other things. So I just wonder what the justification is that we have singled out two people that are men, and we're going to give them 3%, and everybody else gets 1.9%?
Well, the street department has been responsible for $600,000 worth of grant money, so I think that's the justification that people had in mind.
Think of what the rest of them are responsible for, what about the water department?
There was no grant money there. This was $600,000 this town has never seen before.
What does grant money have to do with the salary increases?
It was a lot of work by the street department to get that grant money.
And what was the grant really for?
For all the paving we've been able to do this year.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the rationale.
And the water department is behind all of the improvements on the water department, and they also are interacting with the street department, and they both can do each other's jobs. So what are you setting up there? You're setting up that they're going to be resentful of those people that got 3% and they get 1.9%.
That's a possibility, that issue's been raised, but the council decided to do what they did.
Who's they, the town?
The town council. We voted on it. Other public comments. Council comments.
I've got a comment.
Yep.
This is my last night at a town council meeting, and I'd like to thank everybody for all of your support and guidance and friendship. It's been an interesting experience, not the easiest one for me, this is a tough room to sit in. Pete, especially, thank you for your guidance and friendship. I think no one has worked out harder in this town than you have, except maybe Joe Jodden. And just.
I'm laughing, but that's true.
So just thank you to everybody, the residents, the council that I sit up here with, it's been our, it's been our experience.
It's been real, huh? All right. Any other council comments?
I just make a comment, none of us would have been up here, regardless of what our individual differences are, if we didn't love Long Beach. And that's, everybody here is trying to do the best for Long Beach, people may not agree with it, but I guarantee that everybody's heart was in the right place, maybe not our noses, but our hearts were in the right place. This is a wonderful community, I hope we can get beyond the, would you call it the dupurative nature of the election, and begin to work together, deal with facts, but once again, everybody here loves Long Beach, period.
Well, I guess I'll say goodbye. And I just want to say it's a privilege to represent you, and I'll be out there, I'll still, because I love Long Beach, I love the Constitution, and I wanted to. I love the Constitution and I wanted to stay that we're, we're doing what's right and what upholds the Constitution. So that's my goodbye. Thanks.
Claims approval.
Uh, check number 16834 through 16886, totaling $147,991.16. We had three salaries in November. They were, they were totaled $85,230.92.
Move to a further claims?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Move to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.